Welcome to this week's meeting of the Rockland Board of Selectmen coming to you live on WRPS from the H. Bernard Monahan Memorial Room at Rockland Town Hall. On the agenda this week, we've got the retirement of the Veterans Agent, a State House update, and appointments to the Elementary School Building Committee. Now here's the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Ed Kimball.
Good evening, welcome to tonight's meeting. Would you all please rise and join us for a pledge of allegiance led by our retiring Veterans Agent, Tony Materna.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could you all remain standing for a moment of silence for Ann Phelps, please? The audience and participants and general public should be aware that any and all portions of this open meeting may be recorded by audio and video resources. All of some of this meeting may be rebroadcast periodically by WRPS outlets. Persons wanting a DVD copy of this meeting should contact WRPS or the Board of Selectmen's office, a small fee will be charged. Now with that, we have item number one, open forum. We have retirement for our Veterans Agent Anton Tony Materna. I'd like to call up Mike Mullin from our board. I'd like to call up Representatives from the DAV, the American Legion, and the VFW, please.
And Mr. Materna? The man of the hour?
Well, Tony, on behalf of the town, I was actually saying before the meeting that this has been the longest goodbye. And you deserve that. For all the work, as I mentioned at the last meeting, you've done for our town, especially for our veterans, their families. Just having been involved in town for a while now, having worked at the State House, you know, and having seen the tragedies that so many Rockland families have gone through during your tenure, the comfort, the professionalism you've brought to our town and to the families and to our fallen heroes has really been second to none. And I think the comfort, like you provided everyone, your work, all the parades, your work behind the scenes, your work in advocacy at the State House, you really, you know, you really leave shoes that will actually be impossible to be filled. So on behalf of the town, we do have a whole host of things here for you, so I hope you have some big wall space and free wall space at home. But first of all, on behalf of the Town of Rockland and the Board of Selectmen, we want to present this certificate of recognition to you, to Anton Materna, in recognition of 13 years as the Veterans Affairs Director, I can burial agent, and the numerous committees served in the Town of Rockland. Our community extends to you its heartfelt thanks and appreciation for your tremendous dedication, tireless leadership, like compassion representing the Town of Rockland, Massachusetts, given on this June 30th, it's a, it was a few weeks ago, June 30th, 2017, and it is assigned by each member of the Board of Selectmen, like Mr. Chaka. So first, on behalf of the town, Tony, I want to provide you this, and thank you very much for everything. There's more. Secondly, I want to, on behalf of the United Stateship Constitution, I'll present to you this flag. And to all who shall see these presents, greetings. Know ye that we posing special trust and confidence in the patriotism of Anton F. Materna, I do hereby certify that this flag was flown on board the USS Constitution, also known as Old Ironsides, the oldest ship in the United States Navy, America's ship of state, and the oldest commissioned warship afloat in the world, to commemorate your honorable service to the United States Navy, the Department of Veterans Administration, and as Veterans Agent for Rockland, Massachusetts, on this, the 16th day of June in the year of our Lord, 2017. And this is signed, Tony, by the commanding officer, Robert S. Gerosa, Jr., of the United States Navy. So I present the flag and this to you. And then I want to present this article with the framed plaque, and this is actually from, oh, the Cribbologeist. And he wanted us to present this to you, and I imagine you know
Yes.
... more about what this means than I do, and we all do. But this says, "Congratulations and best wishes for a long and healthy retirement. You will now have plenty of time to study my book, How to Play Cribbage When You Are Up Against Your Bettors, and someday you may be able to beat me on a regular basis." So I want to present this to you as well. So Tony, I know there's a long line of folks here to also honor you, so I'm going to step aside, but again, on behalf of the Board, each member of the Board, thank you very much.
Tony, on behalf of the Rockland Allied Veterans Council, DAV, American Legion, VFW, thank you. On behalf of the Rockland Allied Veterans Council, which is made up of the American Legion members, the DAV and the VFW, we want to thank you for your many years of service, for the many, many, many parades that we struggled through, wondering if this person was going to make it, or if it was going to rain or not, which it did two years ago, we got drenched. But it's been a struggle, but a good struggle. We want to thank you very much for all your help. Each group has a small gift for you. It's nothing compared to what the Town of Rockland and all of us owe you, but we want to thank you very much.
None of this goes to the new friends in front of your house.
Tony, this is from Disabled American Veterans, Chapter 50. I'd like to salute you for all you've done for our disabled American veterans, and to give our appreciation. If you buy some trash cans and maybe you want to put them in the Yeah, alright. Thanks a lot, Tony, you're the best.
Appreciate it.
You're the lady missed.
You helped me over the years on the command of the DAV, and I want to thank you. You're the first guy I've seen before you came to Rockland, and I really appreciate your dedication.
Tony, it gives me great pleasure to present you this little document, because you've done so much, not only for the veterans in town, but for the veterans all around. When they couldn't get any help from their own agent, they would come here, and you took very good care of them. You took very good care of me, and I appreciate it very much. I wish you all the luck in the world, Tony. God bless you, may you keep going. You're a good guy.
We also have Senator John Keenan and State Rep. Dave DeCoste here as well.
Well, good evening, and I'd like to thank the Board for having me come here tonight, and Alan, and it's really an honor to be here tonight. I went into legislature, I'm in my 70th year now, so six years ago, and I had dealt with Veteran Services Agents on the local level, and we're very fortunate, in the city where I came from, the city of Quincy, to have great Veteran Service Agents. But when I got to the State House, there was a bigger area to cover, and you were there. And every time I had a question about a Veterans issue, you were there. Every time we got a call from somebody who had a Veterans issue, and we said, hey, you know, reach out to the town, we never heard from them again, because you took care of whatever they needed to have taken care of. It's really remarkable, the commitment that you showed to veterans. And Andy had mentioned that it wasn't just here in town, you were a person that people from all over the region went to. And I know from dealing with Veteran Service Agents in other towns, and many that were there every year at the breakfasts and lunches or whatever, that you were always at the State House, your reputation was just so far beyond. You were so respected, are so respected, all across the Commonwealth for the work that you do. And Rockland has been a very fortunate place to be for veterans because of all the work that you've done. So I'd like to say thank you on the behalf of the Legislature, State Senate in particular, for everything that you've done. And on a personal level, thank you for your friendship, for your guidance, for your leadership on the issues. I've enjoyed the parades and all those things that you have put your heart and soul into. And then obviously, just down the street here, that great memorial and all the work that went into that as well, with so many people who were involved in that. It shows a spirit here and a commitment here in the town to veterans, and you've been a leader in all of that, so thank you. I do have a citation for you. It's an official citation, "Be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Anton Tony Materna in recognition of your retirement after 13 years," I think it's actually 14, is it, maybe? Yes, "of outstanding and dedicated service as the Town of Rockland's Veterans Affairs Agent. And be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its best wishes for continued success." That this citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested to, and a copy thereof transmitted by the Clerk of the Senate. And it's signed by Senate President Stan Rosenberg, Clerk of the Senate William Welch, myself, John Keenan, dated the 30th day of June 2017. And Tony, thank you for everything, and best wishes for a long and happy, I mean, 40, 50 years.
There you go.
And I know that your work is not done, because you're not somebody who can just sit down. I know it's not done, so thank you.
Okay, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Dave DeCoste. I represent the 5th Plymouth District in the General Court. And I think I get to be the anchor here. What's said, there's not a whole lot to add, except when I first met Tony, I think it was the first day that I actually did office hours here, and I went and sought you out, because we were having a problem in my town with a Veterans Agent. Tony is the benchmark, really. He is the benchmark in an institution even amongst Veterans Agents in the state. He is known by name to Secretary Urina, and I can tell you locally, when there's a problem, when there's a question, when there's a technical how-to, or can you, or how do I get around this so I can accomplish something good? It's always this guy that people call locally, within the Plymouth County and even the larger region. You're an institution, and you're going to be missed. And I thank you, and I'm going to miss, I hope your replacement, who's going to have large shoes to fill, is going to do as well with all the flaggings and the parades and everything you don't have to do, but you do anyway, and you do it so well. And I'm glad you're, we know where you live, you're right down the street still, so you're still going to be around. Be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Anton Materna, Tony. In recognition of your 13 years, I guess 14 years, the Senator says, 14 years to the Town of Rockland, as Director of Veterans Services, and in addition to the many community endeavors that you've accomplished in the Memorial Committee, the Beach Street Landfill Solar Project, and Americans for Disabilities Act, you've done quite a bit. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope and future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors, signed by Speaker DeLeo and myself. And, well done.
Tony, on behalf of the Sheriff, and you know, listening to everybody speak, I had the opportunity to deal with, Tony, with my mom and dad, my mom and dad were both alive, and your compassion, from the moment when I walked in and I shook your hand and asked if you could help my dad, at the age of 93 years old, you were incredible. You didn't hesitate. Your compassion and your love for your job, to listen to everybody, obviously you're truly going to be missed. And that flower you brought to my mother, she'll, God rest her soul, she'll never forget it. It was great. You're the best. So on behalf of the Sheriff, I'd like to present you with this plaque, the Sheriff and your friend, Sheriff Joe McDonald, I'd like to present you with a plaque, Anton Tony Materna, in recognition of your years of dedicated service as Rockland Veterans Agent, February 17, 2004, to June 30, 2017, presented by Sheriff Joseph McDonald.
Congratulations, Tony, and thank you for being on my parade date, and I'll miss you, and thank you for Rockland, making Rockland a better place. Thank you. We'll miss you.
Anyone else?
No, I'm taking numbers. Well, I just want to make a couple comments. It's a tearjerker.
I've got three minutes.
Certainly. Three minutes? I'll make it two and a half. But nonetheless, it's been great. I feel part of Rockland, although I'll never be a townie for this town, but I've lived here for many years, and I have loved doing what I'm doing. I was able to accomplish a few good things here in town, amongst helping the veterans, the widows, and other people in the other areas. So I appreciate this kind of gathering, it's overwhelming, and yet I will still be around, and I will help the Vinny Fontaine and what he may have to do, or hopefully he will carry on the torch, and we'll work together. So I'm not leaving this place, I'm staying here. I'm not going to Florida like a lot of other people do, so it has nothing in it. But I do thank you for your support, thank you for the community support, and God bless you.
It's a difficult transition as a consultant for the town, where we make the transition to our next Veterans Agent, who's doing a great job and comes with experience, but we've chosen to keep Tony on for a short period of time, and a nominal fee to help us out.
Tony, you just felt yourself. I tried, it didn't work.
But I want to thank Tony for offering to help us out and stay on. We've got the parade this year, et cetera, and he'll be here.
Next up on the agenda, we have minutes. Item number two, open session minutes of June 19, 2017. All those in favor? That's four. Selectmen Hall was not present. Open session meeting
That's your friend, the Cribbologeist.
Open session minutes of June 20, 2017.
I'd like to motion to approve.
All those in favor? That's unanimous vote. On unfinished business, we have a State House update from both Senator Keenan and Rep. DeCoste. Who would like to go first?
We've got our local aid figures today, thank you.
Good evening again. Again, thanks for having me. It's great to join Representative DeCoste here this evening, and to give you a brief legislative update. And if you find that being something other than brief, just give me the high sign and say stop. But there are some things I wanted to go over, and I know the Representative has some as well. First, I want to thank you for the partnership. I know that the great work that you do, it doesn't go unnoticed, and we appreciate it. And you've always been a great assistance, and Alan as well, and all the department heads in the town. Whenever we need something, whenever we need information, whenever we need background on something, your folks are always so responsive, so we appreciate it. And then, I know Representative Nyman was here, so I've been very fortunate to serve both Representative Nyman and now Representative DeCoste as partners in the legislature. And not every district has relationships that, where people get along well and they work well together, so I've been very fortunate, and I thank them both for that. I thought I'd just give you a quick rundown on a couple of the things that are popping at the State House, some of the general picture items, and then also some of the more local issues. As far as where we stand financially as a Commonwealth, you may run the newspaper, obviously, that our budget was a little bit delayed this year. The Governor and the House Representatives and the State Senate anticipating that it was going to be a difficult budget to reconcile, passed a 1/12 budget, which meant that the government could keep operating. So while other states were faced with the prospect of a shutdown, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts was able to transition, be ready to transition, and did transition into the first month of the fiscal year, and had all its operations programs in place. And then ultimately, the budget was passed last Friday, seems like a lot longer than last Friday, but it was last Friday. So the budget was passed, and one of the struggles, one of the issues that came up was that the projections of revenue, projections that had done in December, proved to be not all that accurate. And in December, there's a consensus revenue hearing, when experts from different fields across the Commonwealth, from universities, from the Federal Reserve, from all sorts of organizations, they come forward and they give their best estimate as to what the economy is going to do, and what the state can expect in revenues. And so based on that, the Governor put together his budget, and the House then proceeded to put together its budget, as did the Senate. After all three of those budgets were introduced, and in the case of the House and Senate, after those were passed, the analysis of the revenues for the current fiscal year showed that things weren't keeping up, that our revenues just were not meeting benchmarks, and that we were in fact in a deficit situation for FY17, the current fiscal year. And FY18 budget is built off of the base of the '17 revenues, and then a projection beyond that. So we found ourselves, after the budgets had been passed, where the base hadn't even been attained. And so there had to be an adjustment, and the adjustment had to be in the area of about $730, $740 million, which is a pretty sizable adjustment that has to be made from the time that both budgets were passed, to the time that they had to be reconciled, sent for the Governor, and sent to the Governor. So the Governor's budget initially was $40.9 billion, his was the highest, then the Senate budget came in at $40.8 billion, the House budget was at $40.3 billion, and the budget that was passed last week, that's now on the Governor's desk, is at $40.2 billion. And so there was about a $733 million tax revenue issue that had to be addressed, and that was addressed in the reconciliation process, what they call the conference process between the House and the Senate. They did some of that by recognizing that it's unlikely we were going to meet revenue targets for the upcoming fiscal year, and if we had, it would have triggered a tax reduction, knowing that we weren't going to meet those targets, that tax reduction, which is by statute was not going to occur, so that meant that there's about $83 million more that would be available. The Governor went into non-tax revenue, did some non-tax revenue increases, and he also went to certain agencies and authorities and asked them to contribute to the state budget. And then there's about $205 million in anticipated efficiencies that will come into place. And then also, reduction in mass health spending, and on top of the reduction in mass health spending, an effort that went from the Governor to the legislature, back to the Governor, and then ended up in the legislature's joint budget, relative to making employers responsible to a greater degree for healthcare cost of employees, particularly those that may move over to the mass health program. So the budget for the present fiscal year is being balanced, and as we go into fiscal year 2008, there's a degree of confidence that that budget is balanced as well. And we're hopeful that revenue estimates will hold true. In fact, we're hopeful that we'll be able to exceed those estimates, unlike this year. They had been projected growth of about 3.5 percent, according to the experts, but the legislature, the House and the Senate, the budget that they passed on to the Governor last week, shows a revenue projection increase of about 1.9 percent. So it's a pretty responsible approach to that. Locally, I know one of the biggest concerns relative to the state budget is what will it mean to the municipalities and local aid, what will it mean to the Town of Rockland as far as its local aid figures. And so Chapter 70, and these are now final figures that we've conveyed to the town, Chapter 70 will go up by about a half a percent, that's school funding. Unrestricted general government aid will go up by about 3.9 percent. Veterans benefits will go up about 0.3 percent. And then separate, apart from that, which we still consider local aid, but it's a separate funding mechanism, is Chapter 90, which is roadway funding. And that would be up about 0.32 percent. So you can see that local aid, unrestricted local aid, which for Rockland is about $2.6 million, is up 3.9 percent, which is beyond what our revenue growth is projected to be. So that is evidence that the House and the Senate and the Governor give great importance to making sure that municipalities get local aid, sufficient local aid, never enough, and we understand that, based with all the pressures that you face. But nonetheless, I think it's demonstrative of a commitment from all three, House, Senate, and Governor, that local aid needs to be funded as best as possible. In the process of that, there are other areas, though, where, you know, some of the things that the town relies on, and this is not unique to Rockland, but other towns as well, they will see some squeezing of budgets, some level funded of some of the budgets, in some cases, some decreases. Grants to council on aging, which we know is very important here in the Town of Rockland. There is a $567,000 statewide decrease in that program. We're hopeful that as revenues become available, that that's an area we can look at. Again, homeless student transportation is down. Good news, early educator rate reserve, which so many families rely on early childhood education, and we as a society really rely on being able to attract quality educators to that, so that rate reserve is an effort to continue to be able to attract. The Chapter 70 per pupil minimum aid amendment, a lot of money went into that this year. There is a funding level now of about $30 per pupil, which is up significantly from years past, but not quite where we'd like to be, not quite where we'd like to be compared to where we were last year. So we're going to continue to keep working on that. We were able, Representative and myself, to get some local priorities into the budget. The Plymouth County Regional Fire and Rescue Dispatch Center, which has always been a priority, Chief Duffy, that was funded at $100,000, both the House and the Senate. And also, the Rockland Public Schools Professional Development for ELL teachers, and then the Rockland Public Schools Professional Development for Special Ed teachers, and Rep. DeCoste was instrumental, and I'm sure he'll be able to figure in on both of those. So we're grateful that we were able to get them through the House and the Senate, through the conference process, and onto the Governor's budget. Just a quick note unrelated to the state budget, we're pleased to partner with the Town of Rockland and the School Building Authority in advancing the new school through the process. It's, I know in the eligibility period now, and I know some of that planning is being reimbursed by the state at the 58 percent level, so that's good news. We're going to continue to work with the School Building Authority, with the town, the school committee, and with you folks, to make that process as smooth as possible. It's become somewhat, it's very smooth. The School Building Authority does a really good job at it, so we just kind of watch, if we sense that there's a need for us to get involved, we do that. We go to the different sessions of the School Building Authority to support the municipality, to support Rockland, and do what they have to do. So for instance, the feasibility study that will be funded at 58 percent by the Commonwealth, so we think that's great for the town. We've seen what state money and town money and town commitment can do right behind here. It's pretty remarkable, and a great school facility. I know an issue that has popped up in the town is the Studley Pond Dam. Alan doesn't let it go, thankfully. He keeps pushing us on that particular issue. There was a question as to who's responsible, who owns. We've made some progress in having the Department of Transportation acknowledge, having DOT acknowledge, that the ownership of the dam rests with them, and we think that's an important step. So we're going to continue our efforts to move that project along. There have been two earmarks over the years for funding, one more specific, one more general. In 2014, in the environmental bond bill, there was a line there for the Town of Rockland, very limited, $100,000. And then also, in the 2012 transportation bond bill, there was a general reference to the project. But the funding realistically won't come from either one of those, it's going to have to be from some other fund or whatever. And it's a relatively expensive undertaking, but we're going to continue to work with you folks to see what we can do on that. I know that there has I know that there has, we've received some phone calls and some emails relative to the situation at Union Point and the Volkswagen lot that's being permitted over there, and my understanding is that the permit for that particular project had a provision that expressed a preference, if not a requirement, that the trucks coming and going to the site not come down Route 18, not go through Town of Waymouth, but that they travel over roads that go through the town of Rockland. And we've done some research, and we've passed that research on, and whatever way you want to approach this, we're more than willing to help. I think that the law is fairly clear that it's on your side. And so however you may want to address that, we're here to.
I actually spoke with the mayor this afternoon.
Oh, okay.
And made him well aware, and thank you and your office for providing us with that information.
Thank you. You know, that's kind of what we have in the, in that sense, I'll pass it on. I do have some other items to cover, but if you have questions on them, that's great. Otherwise, we can chat offline and I'll pass it on to the representative.
Well, off the center, thank you for addressing everything with such specificity. I don't have to touch anything.
We'll get that one off.
Yeah. Yeah, well, we'll do, we'll do a couple. I appreciate working with the Senator's office and often, and also with Allen. You've got a great management team here, and I think the call and the discussion you had with the general, the governor's chief, I'm still in the Army, the governor's chief of staff regarding Reed's Pond really made a difference, because I think after you had spoken to him, things started to move in a positive direction. And I just, just met with the governor in caucus five hours ago, and it came up again, and I just mentioned it to him, but I thanked him that, you know, we're moving forward and we hope to get that resolved before something bad happens with the dam. I want to talk a little bit about, you should also mention, I wanted to thank specifically Dr. Krone and Dan Biggins, because at the budget process a couple of months ago, we were looking for a couple of earmarks from Rockland, and within 30 minutes after contacting Dr. Krone, he came back and he had those specific earmarks for SPECT and ELL. And they were carried, they were carried through the House budget, and the Senator kept an eye on them on the Senate side, and they will be signed into law, so that should, that should help Rockland a little bit. I know there's an ELL challenge over here, so that will, that should help along some extent. I've talked about the dam. We'll talk a little bit about marijuana. The marijuana law may well be enacted as it was passed, although the governor is trying and let Senator, our understanding is that they've got a bit of a hang-up on the committee that is deliberating, and it has to do with local control. The governor's position is that the boards of selectmen in every town should be able to opt out, and there are some questions regarding taxation as well, and both of those items are in dispute. So we may well pass that law as passed by the people and enacted into law. So it's not something I wanted to report back to you, but as of four hours ago, that is a distinct possibility. And finally, I wanted to give another attaboy to Marcy and Allen, because they did the green communities, the administrator of green communities made it a point to tell me that Rockland's presentation and package up to them for the green communities' grants was superb. In some cases, there are some communities that their presentation, their package leaves a little bit left to be desired. You dotted the i's and crossed the t's, and it was perfect. And I think that's reflected in the award that Rockland got, so. And in that, Senator, that completes my presentation, if you have any questions.
Any questions from the board?
I just have a quick comment. First of all, I just want to thank you both for the partnership. Just because I worked for the Senator, I'm regularly in touch with his office, just talking about the priorities that you mentioned, and, you know, I can say just firsthand that there is a partnership from both your offices and everything we do. And just really the fact that everything you do, like up, like at the State House, really, I mean, like in terms of the marijuana law, or whatever it is, but in everything else you do, really, both you, Senator, like you rep, have served as local officials in your hometowns in Quincy and in Norwalk, and you've never left that behind. And I think you're a commitment to having a local process, number one, in the marijuana law, but also just everything else you do. You get and understand, you know, the needs of our schools, for example, in terms of the ELL and the SPECT challenges, and like everything happening with the Foundation Budget Review Commission and the priority of that. So thank you. I just wanted to, like as the Senator mentioned, a lot of communities really don't have the type of partnership that Rockland has with, like its legislators, and I just want to thank you for that, and it is a good team, I think, between all of us, and I just want to thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you, and thank you.
Thank you.
And again, and again, I'd like to extend my thanks from your staff, John. I know that Mike Mull initially sent the email looking for some guidance on it, and the information was enlightening, but it also gave us, it gave us a position that we could take then, and at least we could do it and we could resolve the problem. Hopefully, it's been resolved now amicably and, you know, it won't happen again, but we appreciate your office and at least giving us the knowledge of where we could go and couldn't go with it, because what happens is sometimes people say a lot of things when they're in a position, whether on a board or someplace, and sometimes that's taken as the gospel, and it's actually not the case. It was contrary, actually, in this particular issue with regards to use of the roadway. So it was good to know that, and it was good that it was coming from a person, you know, that we can trust and a person who's looking out for us here in Rockland. And I know John was there when I went in town for, when we had the MSBA announcement that we were selected to pursue the feasibility for elementary schools. So it's good to see familiar faces, and I think at that point, when I said it was good to actually see government working well together. I mean, it's one of the, one of the good times to come together and, you know, when the state can do things locally for local communities. And I think it's great that we have an open dialogue with all members of the board and that you folks are both around and only a phone call away. And you don't get that a lot with people who are elected, unfortunately, but we're very fortunate, Rockland have both you representatives and helped get us there. And Rockland's been fortunate that the state has actually helped a lot with the grants and things like that, because we've partnered with the state. So it's a nice thing to actually do that and allow us to provide more services for not only the people in our town, but, you know, it actually takes some of the financial burden off as well. So we appreciate that, and on behalf of the board, I'd like to say thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up on the unfinished business, we have Rockland Saves update with Sean Callahan.
I'd like to thank the board for having me here. Also, I'd like to thank Allen and Marcy for their incredible support. My name is Sean Callahan. I'm the program manager with Able Home Performance. My company has partnered with your community to help reach some energy efficiency goals. The outcome of our partnership hopefully will be to meet the goals and therefore win some funding that is on the line from National Grid. They're offering a fair amount of money for folks to take the time and the effort to make changes in their lifestyles at their home to save energy. We are about 40% into the program, and we're nearly halfway to our goal for energy assessments. We need to have 404 assessments done by the end of the year. As of the end of May, we have 183 done, that's 45%. At the rate we're going right now, at the rate we're ramping up and bringing people into the system, I don't find that goal will be difficult to meet. We have a seasonal business where people are really interested, at least in New England, about energy efficiency when it's cold. When it's hot, it's also a very easy opportunity to save energy as well. Electricity might be just one of the most expensive bills that I have in my home. And again, when we come out and we perform no-cost home energy assessments, we can replace any incandescent bulbs you have, any old-fashioned bulbs that you have, we can put in brand-new LED bulbs. They use such a small amount of energy, it's astounding. At any rate, our goal is to come here, speak with the board, and speak with the viewers and the folks here to see how we can push more people towards having an assessment to help us reach our goal. We had incredible luck at Rockland Day, it was a great event, the weather was fantastic. We had quite a few folks out and about, meeting people and signing them up to have people from my company come out and perform energy assessments. Word of mouth is huge for us. If you have a friend, if you've had an assessment, please refer a friend to us. It's very easy to find us on the Internet. We have a website that's co-branded, it's called rocklandsaves.com, it's very easy to find. You can sign up for an assessment there. We're going to be at the farmer's market starting probably this Friday from 3:00 to 7:00 PM for the end of the summer. If you're there, if you're out and about, you can come and meet with one of my team members and sign up with them, it's very easy. I would like to ask people to keep an eye out for their water bills. We'll have an insert in the water bills briefly speaking to the partnership and how easy it is to sign up and have us come out at no cost to you. Lastly, I'd like to offer, I'd like to say, don't hesitate. Most folks, again, in the summertime, don't think much about energy efficiency. It's a great time to go ahead and schedule your home. Our flexibility is unbelievable at this time of the year. Typically, we could offer three times for you to have us out within the next 10 days. As soon as August comes and back to school comes, it just tightens up proportionally. There are a few new incentives that I'd like to share with the crowd. If you've had an energy assessment and you didn't act on any of the work that we can propose, MassAve has taken off the $2,000 rebate cap. So simply put, if you have a $10,000 job at your home, MassAve will pay $7,500 of that. Typically, they had a cap at $2,000, they've removed that. They're trying to push savings through the system, just like we are. It's an incredible rebate for people who have a lot of work to do with their home. Secondarily, if you have central AC at your home, there are ways that you could have a free Wi-Fi thermostat installed at your home. National Grid has a program called Connected Solutions. If you have central AC, you agree to have National Grid put a Wi-Fi thermostat in your home, and you agree to demand response, you could have the Wi-Fi thermostat for free. Again, it's completely up to you, it's just another new offering from the program. The last new incentive is that we can offer unlimited LED bulbs. These are not the Curly Q bulbs, these are the brand-new, modern bulbs. You turn them on, they turn on, they're ready to go, they're cool to the touch. We used to have limits to what we can install, all the limits have been taken off. If you have incandescent bulbs anywhere in your home and we have the right bulb to swap it out, we can swap it out for you. Lastly, I'd just like to thank Allen and Marcy for being incredible partners in this program. Thank the board for having me, and see if I can answer any questions that you all might have for us.
Any questions from the board?
The only thing I have is I promised you and Marcy that I would help spread the word on social media, and I haven't forgot about that, and I'll do that, and I'll be calling as well, because my house needs some help, and I'm not able to do it all myself, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I got one other quick comment.
Sure.
I know that I had my house done, and it's actually helped, but there wasn't any programs for fluorescent lamps or anything like that, like if you had them in your garage or something like that. So I don't know if they're going to expand that in the future, because now that they do have LED tube lights, I don't know if that was something that's going to be considered. And the other comment I made was, it's too bad that they couldn't expand the portion of the program that you could actually install new batteries or check people's smoke detectors at the same time. That's something that'd be very helpful when people have assessment done when they come out, because it's another thing that people don't think about, they forget about it, but obviously, smoke detector, I know it's not part of the MassAves things, but I'm just bringing it up, because maybe the next pool, the next round, it might be something you can bring, because you're already in the home. So it might be something that, you know, that you can not only save energy, but potentially save a life later, so it's something to think about. Because it gives you an opportunity when you're in a home that some people don't have the ladder or the tools to go through, change the battery, they forget about it, where you're changing, I know that when they did my house, I think they did like 72 bulbs. And I had it done prior to that, and they had changed stuff before, but LEDs, it helps save more money, so.
I think that that's great input about the battery. We have quarterly meetings with the utility companies, I'd be happy to raise that with them. I think it's a great idea to market to folks that might not have.
And even replace smoke detectors, because there's an expiration date on the smoke detectors that people aren't aware of. So you might think you have coverage, but, you know, unfortunately, you may not really be safe. So it's something to think about, I mean, and smoke detectors, whether they're hardwired and battery, it's something that's still, if they're using energy and they're not working, you know.
What are they really doing? That's great input, thank you.
So we appreciate what you're doing, and hopefully you make the goal.
I hope so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Yes.
Would it change your citizens to be in town?
Oh, the road ring?
Absolutely. It's open to all the gray pairs.
I live in, I live in a senior complex, and we also burn lights.
Right.
Everything else, but we were told that, we're always, we're told that it's only for the homeowners.
What community do you live in, sir? What community do you live in?
Rockland.
No, no, I'm sorry, the name of the community that you live in.
The Garden Terrace.
Garden Terrace. How about housing? Right. Our contract with MassAve is for homes from one to four units in it. Whenever we get above four units, that's not someone that we can serve as a company. That does not mean that you can't be served by the MassAve program. When it's above four units, they have a multi-family aggregator, and what I could do is find the contact information for that, and maybe I could help you by giving you that contact information. Okay? And it's the same program, different people administer it.
Now that you made that comment, how do they treat condominiums? I know we have a, I have a condominium, we have a large condominium population here.
So condominiums, we can perform energy assessments in four units and down. So if you have a four-unit association, we can serve you four and above, they want to push it, just as this gentleman mentioned, through the multi-family aggregator.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Marcy. Okay, next up on the agenda, we have item number five, elementary school building committee appointments, Mr. Chalka.
I don't think this requires a board vote or anything, I think it's just an acknowledgement. We had asked capital planning, finance committees to make appointments to the school committee, but we want to announce that the capital planning has chosen Brian Hughes as their representative, and the finance committee has chosen Rich Penny and Julie Schaefer to serve on that.
Okay.
Elementary school building.
Okay, next up on the new business, we have item number six, Park and Howard Street project, Mr. Chalka.
Very simply, just an acknowledgement that if you remember, at the end of Park and Howard Street on the south side, this board has had hearings, had the gentleman in, supported as a favorable 40B, a 38-unit development with 10 of them to be affordable. This is a letter from Mass Housing saying that they have received their site eligibility letter and that it is a great step forward. There is a hard copy of the letter, there is one set of conditions that we have already distributed to the various departments, making sure that all the environmental conditions and standards are met, stormwater runoff, et cetera, and before a permit, but their next step is to go before zoning. Just letting the board know and the neighbors know and the community know that that project is heading forward. And certainly, the great news is, I believe, once they actually file with the zoning board, that meets our first year's eligibility of the one-half of 1%. And then I know that there are a couple of other projects out there that are in line coming forward, but now that we have a housing production plan, our annual requirement is a little less as we work towards reaching the 10% goal of affordable units here in the town. So I don't know if the board has any questions or if I'm able to answer them, but that project that came forward has been approved.
Okay, any questions from the board?
Do we have any timeline in terms of?
I know they're anxious to get going, so they've got to go before zoning.
Okay.
They had, Mr., go ahead.
I'm good. Okay, item number seven, we have the Waymouth VW travel restrictions. Want to start off, Mr. Chalka?
Well, I can start off. I know that I've spent weeks talking to virtually everybody under the sun, and everybody wanted to point at someone else and say, it wasn't me, wasn't me, wasn't me. But as is evidenced in your book, the building permit for transportation, the problem was not only the number of vehicles, but also that there was a requirement that Waymouth had put out saying that had put out, saying that all truck traffic and truck carriers, car carriers, had to come through Rockland while Waymouth issued the permit. And of course, a lot of people on this side of the border were not happy with that. And sometimes, the wheels of government move slowly, but in this case, I actually sent out an email at one point, said the silence was deafening, as people, no one took responsibility, nor did they rescind that condition on the permit. I do want to thank Senator Keenan's office for the research they did. I forwarded that research that showed that the condition issued by the town of Waymouth, whether the building department or the mayor, but the mayor has taken credit for it a couple of times on air and in interviews. I forwarded that to the newspapers finally, after hearing nothing from Southfield, the developers, the Southfield Board, or the town of Waymouth. And finally, I think as a result of that letter to the newspaper, which was a copy of Senator Keenan's office, saying that they can't do that, apparently, the mayor found your phone number after two weeks of losing it in some pocket or something.
Yeah, I finally got, I got the phone call late this afternoon.
So, I certainly made it very clear that, in my interview with the newspaper, so I'm hoping that maybe the, the olive branch has been extended, but it might not be after tomorrow's comments in the newspaper. I made it clear to the reporter that this was an amateur move by the town of Waymouth. Certainly, if they want to work in cooperation with us, we're ready to work in cooperation, but they can't accept the permits and then place the burden on the town of Rockland. Additionally, as we surveyed, the only permit issued has been by the town of Waymouth, and there has been no permit issued by the town of Rockland, and they have been subject to fines. And again, as a result of absolutely no feedback from anybody at Southfield, by the developers, L-Star, virtually anyone who had anything to do with this project, we heard crickets. And so, Mr. Rubel has been issuing since sometime last week, I think last Wednesday, a daily fine of $300 a day for the vehicles that are stored on the Rockland side of the line. I imagine that we'll get some response now. In fact, Mr. Barry, yesterday afternoon, late yesterday afternoon, was unaware, although a certified letter had been sent. So, we were seeking to resolve the issue, and I don't doubt for a second that most of the traffic would probably come down to 28, but the city of Waymouth cannot prohibit the traffic from--
Town, town of Waymouth.
Town of Waymouth. Cannot prohibit traffic from using Route 18, or what's to become to the next big project in Rockland? Are we going to demand that all vehicle traffic go through Columbia Square, which would drive them crazy? I understand, and we don't want to get into a Chris Christie and a bridge situation. You know, traffic is free to go where it wants to go, and so, certainly, in Government 101, people ought to realize that. If there's a traffic jam or a reason for vehicles to go one way or another, it's up to them. And when the traffic gets too tight, they'll go another direction.
That would make life a beach, as Mr. Chris Christie's most recent indiscretion. But again, I think it's unfortunate, because the applicant did what they were supposed to do, and they had some misinformation. And I think what has happened is, I mean, thanks to diligence of one of our residents that brought the initial issue to our attention, and Mr. Mullen sent an email off to Senator Keenan's office, we're able to get some guidance from Senator Keenan's office, which was very helpful. And in fact, it seems that, even speaking with some people over at SRA, that there was, we'll say, a concern of where the bounds were, or what they were told where the applicant was placing his temporary fencing for the used vehicles. It's all a temporary issue. It's not a huge money issue, it's only a permit issue, but it becomes more of a political issue, because we have one town saying that they're going to go through and direct things to happen when they really can't do that. And again, I did speak to the mayor today, and he acknowledged that that condition is unenforceable. He also mentioned that it came from his building department, and he was going to address it with them. But we ended the conversation that both our communities, Rockland, Waymouth, as well as Abington, we have better things to do than to worry about somebody trying to, political grandstand over us trying to direct traffic on roads that neither one, well, in this particular issue, they didn't have the right to do that. No, would Rockland have the right to issue a permit to direct traffic in Waymouth? Although, that was mentioned, and I think that was mentioned, and just for the simple fact that, you know, if they can do it, so can I, and that doesn't solve the problem. So, I want to thank, again, Senator Keenan's office for getting us the information and allowing us to come from a point where, here's the information, no, you can't do that. Tell us that you can, or if you're going to do this in the future, you've got to at least ask our permission and meet with us to see if we're even going to consider it. And the conversation ended with the mayor that it was understood that it won't happen again, and that it's been resolved as far as we're concerned. So, we're going to address, we're going to instruct our building inspector to follow through now that we have some clear path to go through with the applicant to issue a portion of permit, or at least review a permit and issue appropriately for the pieces that are in Rockland. And again, this is only a temporary situation. It's basically, any of the recall vehicles that VW had in the area, in the region, they're collecting them, they're putting them there until they can be sold off. So, it's a temporary situation. It's not a huge tax maker. All it is, is L-Star trying to make use of some temporary, let's say, get some temporary income in from the land in the meantime, so they can continue to pursue the project and, you know, get the project so that it can move forward. So, I think around the holidays, that might have contributed to a little bit of the delay, but I still think that, as I said to somebody else, when people make a mistake, you give them the benefit of the doubt, but they do it the second time, then it's shame on us. And it became that type of thing, and unfortunately, we had to go through and take a stand, and lucky for us that they've seen our side, and it should be over with now. So, you know, all I can say is I want to thank the mayor for calling me, and I'd like to thank the mayor for acknowledging that they were wrong, and that it won't happen again. So, as far as I'm concerned, that's the end of it. So, although the papers might have a different picture tomorrow, as Mr. Chaka mentioned, but again, that's old news. So, new news is this afternoon, it's a dead issue. So, I want to thank everybody for at least following through on it.
Shining a little more light on it kind of got the mayor's attention.
Well, I think what happened was, once we had the information, we came from a better position, a better bargaining position. And again, sometimes Waymouth does think they're a city, but we have to remind them that they're a partner in Union Point, just as we are, and we want to see the project succeed, and we want to see it succeed for all three communities, whether that's Abington, Rockland, or Waymouth. We want to make sure that it's here for a long time, because it's going to benefit all three communities in the future with not only tax revenue, but jobs, and it's going to, it's going to allow us to be a hub on the south shore. At some point, you know, people want to be here. I mean, we're trying to make, you know, it costs money to build a school, it costs money to replace the fire station, to continue with roadwork, and we need tax revenue to do that, because, I mean, obviously, a lot of people got their new tax bills, and we have a CPA that we all overwhelmingly voted for, so it's another increase we're paying for. And, you know, we need to give the residents some ways so that we can still continue capital improvements, still provide more services, and still maintain some level where they can live here, or their children can live here in the future. I mean, we don't want to outprice ourselves, but we still want to be able to provide the services. So, I think we're all hedging our bets a little bit on Union Point becoming successful, because we're going to need that in the future. So, we really should be, as I said to the mayor today, we really need to be focusing our efforts on making South Point, excuse me, Union Point be an economic engine, as opposed to this, say, meddling back and forth over where the traffic should go unnecessarily, with unneeded attention for an issue that really should have been a non-issue. We should be talking about the big things, not where a car carrier's coming down the road. And it's just unfortunate that some people focused only on that, as opposed to the good that's happening over there. So, I mean, we have water issues, that we should be focused on getting the water there. We should be focused on making sure that businesses come in there. I mean, there was an announcement today in the paper that Amazon's got 900 jobs going to Fourth Point Channel. Why couldn't those 900 jobs go over to Union Point? You know? Those things like that. We need those, we need those types of jobs for all three communities. So, I think we need to worry more about that than worrying about who's, you know, what truck's coming down the road, who's going to find a truck, because they're in Waymouth. And hopefully, you know, the mayor has a clearer understanding of that after our conversation today, and I seem to think he does, but let's hope that he doesn't get, we'll say, amnesia in the future, and things continue on a positive method. So, anything else?
I guess I'll--
No, go ahead. Do the vice chairman. The precedent's now. I'm the old guy.
I know. I was just going to ask, Mr. Chairman, in your conversation with the mayor, did he say that that provision in the permit would be rescinded?
He said he would talk to the building department. He acknowledged they are unenforceable, and that it came from his building department, and that he would address it with the building department. So, I was led to believe that it would be addressed within his building department. So, as like any good politician, they share the blame throughout.
Yes, just, and I guess, to echo the point, I don't want to belabor the issue, but, like, we're supposed to be working together to address water and business and everything else, and it is just, like, I was really concerned, the precedent that it set, right at the outset, when we're supposed to be all working together for this thing, and, oh, we're not doing that, otherwise, they're out there making headlines about this. That was just, like, a little concerning. I was already tonight to, to come here and ask that we reach out to Mass DOT and ask them to enforce their provisions in the town of Waymouth, but, like, if you believe that things are--
I believe it's been resolved.
On a more positive--
And again, I, it should be the first issue to, we'll call it fake news, from the second time it happened around, it's like, all right, it's something that needs to be addressed. And sometimes, people get misquoted. I mean, we've been misquoted in the past, so, I don't want to, I'm not going to make excuses for the mayor, but I'm going to go through and say that we had an understanding that it was unenforceable, there was an error on their side, and they'll address it on their side. So, that's all we can do, and at least, as far as I'm concerned, the issue's in our rearview mirror now, so.
I got an issue.
Mr. Ryan?
If you have an open space, and it's just a field someplace, and then somebody comes along and puts a parking lot and stores cars there, does the value of the property go up, and has our assessors gone over there to reassess that piece of property that they're using, that's now registered as an open area, but it isn't? It's now a business there? Whether it's a storage business, I don't care what you call it, now the property values have gone up. So, why aren't our assessors out there saying, "Well, this property now is no longer just open space, it's not a wide-open field, it's being used, and it should be evaluated and assessed for the proper tax taxation that we should get." We shouldn't be getting $300 a day for a fine, which they should be paying for not coming to us in the first place, but if that property is no longer just open property, then it's, should be assessed at a different level than when an open field is, because it's no longer an open field.
Well, unfortunately, the applicant had some misinformation, so I don't think they realized they were actually encroaching in Rockland. And when it was brought to their attention, they come in, and again, we held off issuing any permit until we could go through and address the underlying issue, which was the fact that the previous permit was issued with all the traffic going for Rockland, which we all know now is not only unenforceable, but it's not allowed by the state. And the only way the state would allow that is if there was a roadway project going on, the DOT had determined that these are alternate routes for certain-sized vehicles, and then even at that case, they still need permission with our town to do that, because it's a town road. But if, if, let's say that Hingham Street was a state road, then the DOT could, in fact, overrule us and say, "By the way, it's a state road, and we're redirecting traffic here. Well, we're working on this project." But again, those are things we all found out with the help of Senator Keenan's office, and the fact that no one's really come across this before. No other board has ever had a problem with another town saying, "Send your traffic this," you know, "through us," you know? So, when we get our medical marijuana facilities, we're going to direct them all? I'm kidding. I'm kidding.
Mr. Chairman, I have just one follow-up question. I know, I'm not sure if the applicant's going to be looking to store cars on the Rockland side, but when I heard about this, I wasn't sure whether or not the motor vehicle fluids, the oil, the transmission fluid, and all that are being drained from these vehicles before they're being parked on this particular area. We don't know where the drainage goes there. I've kind of been playing phone tech like a month with one of the employees over at L-Star to try to figure out what runoff area comes into our catchment areas, because we know that we've had some flooding concerns. So, for me, I was looking at it for flooding, but now, if they're, if these, the motor vehicle fluids aren't being drained from those particular vehicles, it could pose a potential environmental risk. So, my question is, especially if they're going to be there for a long time. So, I'd like to know, one, are they being, is it being removed? And two, if it's not, are there catch basins that drain into our areas, and whether or not we should put separators in there? Small, small price, small permit price, but just something to think about, depending how long this particular arrangement continues for.
I believe that a lot of towns range north toward Waymouth and out toward--
I mean, they're all valid questions, and again, we weren't even at the table to ask these questions--
Correct.
--or address them, because everybody's led to believe that this particular operation was going to be in Waymouth's area. And I can't speak to see if the building department in Waymouth had those same questions or same concerns.
Well, hopefully, if I get a chance to get up there, meet with L-Star, I'll get a good idea of where their underground drainage is going, what's going into that detention basin, and where it's going.
But we can pass those same concerns on to our building inspector, and it can be addressed in the permit application, and again, it's something that we can go through, because it appears either the applicant is going to need to get a permit to keep the cars in the portion of Rockland, or the applicant's going to have to remove the cars from Rockland in a timely manner and expand back over to the Waymouth side. And again, I can't tell you what the applicant's going to do or not do, but we were in no position to go through and issue any permit until the first piece was resolved, and it appears to have been resolved--
Great.
--finally today, before tonight's meeting, so. And again, thankfully, we only have one meeting in July, because otherwise, you know, it may have been to August. But again, it's been resolved, you know, through the work and cooperation of a lot of different people, and we appreciate that. And again, until the issue was brought to us, we couldn't address it, because, as everybody knows who's driven by there, the cars have expanded. When it first started, I thought it was just some off-site parking originally for maybe some overflow from some, that they designated a spot for the contractors who were working in there, so they wouldn't take up the streets. And then I thought, well, maybe it was something for social hospital, maybe they're doing some shuttling for some employees, because South Shore Hospital has a construction project going on. And then we find out that it was VW, so we got the VW bug, I guess. Now it's been, now we're better, so. And again, Alan, when you can speak with the building inspector and--
Assessors.
--the applicant, and see if the applicant's going to pursue a permit, or if the applicant's going to, you know, remove the cars and stay in the Waymouth side. That's entirely up to the applicant at this point. And for us, now we can move forward with some sort of resolution, and hopefully, the applicant, if he does stay there, he does what he needs to do to make sure it complies with what we're looking for. So, I just, I just feel bad for the applicant, because he was put in a situation where he tried to do the right thing to get a permit, but unfortunately, he had some misinformation, which put him into the, you know, over the line. So, we don't want to have a half-hails-a-McCoy type thing, but we want to make sure that people understand, you know, you know, "This is North Rockland, is that South Way?" No, I'm kidding. But it's, it's one of those things, it was an honest mistake, I think, and I hate to see the applicant hung up over something that really wasn't their fault. But now we have resolution, let's try to bring it to some closure. Okay, next up, we have item number nine, fund transfers.
Revised license, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, sorry. Number eight, revised license, Union Point, food truck rodeo licenses, I believe. Mr. Chaka?
There's a note in your book asking to table this, because they're expecting rain. I did let the attorney know that you meet on August 1st if they want to forward this. They had permission for June 16th, it got rained out, they were trying to move this license to this Friday, it appears that's going to get rained out, so they do not have a date for reschedule yet. I did let the applicant know that your next and only meeting in the summer is August 1st, so I would ask you to table that.
And they don't have any more corrections?
They have not reapplied with another date, so they would be unlicensed if they were in Rockland. One of the conditions will be, of course, that everyone has to use Route 18.
I was to--
Second? Just one quick thing before we table it. I know that we had previously pre-approved, we had approved it before. So, if we've approved the license before, is it just going to be an extension of a rain date, because it got canceled once already for a rain date?
Right.
I mean, I don't want to hang up somebody who's trying to put an event on if we can't meet prior, if they're going to try to schedule it and commit people if we can't vote on it, then if we do vote it on August 1st...
Everything is here, if you want to approve subject to all conditions being met, that might give them a little more latitude, but...
I'll make that motion. Second?
Okay, all those in favor? All right. Thank you. Again, we had previously approved it, so it's just a rain date, so just get, we don't make the weather. But I hate to see, I know it's tough when you're trying to plan events, and you pick rain dates, and then if you have to wait again, and then it starts all over again, you might miss the event. It may end up happening, you know, after school starts versus in the summer, like it was meant to be. Okay, on to item number nine, we have fund transfers.
There are two fund transfers before you tonight, Mr. Chairman. One is for $10,094 to be come from the Board of Selectmen's account, $2,000 from vacation coverage, account number 0112251-515000, $6,094 from the Regulatory Secretary line item, 10, excuse me, 0112251-511037, and $2,000 from conference meetings, 0112257-573100. Two, the Town Hall Utilities account line item, 0119252521500.
Do you have a motion?
Is that motion? Second?
All those in favor? Envious vote, thank you.
I think we ought to be able to say as printed, but we'll work on that and check the law. The second is from Group Insurance for $7,500, $7,500 from the Group Insurance line item, Two, the Department of Medicare Tax FICA expense, 0191651-515030.
Motion?
Second? All those in favor? Envious vote, thank you. Okay, next up, item number 10, we have Town Ministry's report and correspondence. Mr. Chaka?
I'll try and keep this as brief as possible. I put a few things in here. I just want to let you know we're almost completely completed, I guess is the best I can say. With our ADA doors, revamping our bathrooms, we have automatic doors. If you didn't get a key from me tonight, you should see me and get a key. We have changed our front doors. We are sending out an email tomorrow to all committees that do use the front doors, they have to be, they have to come in and sign that they're getting their new keys. We'll be meeting with all the department heads tomorrow that do have keys and access to the buildings, but we had to swap out the keys when we swapped out the doors, but we now have handicapped accessible doorways. The bathrooms have been done, the door handles throughout Town Hall, signs have been done. There were a number of projects, but hats off to John Lucas, Massey, and Tom Rovell for putting this together and getting it accomplished in very short order. And again, our priority for those items were those items we could do in about 30 days prior to June 30th. We will be putting together the new ADA application, and we are looking at those things that are still left in the ADA report that we had previously. Deidre, you had had, Deidra, excuse me, I'm working on Deidra and Deidra, but you had indicated a desire to participate in that, and I have asked Massey to reach out to you as we put together our priority list, looking at funding priorities, also some of the buildings. Aggregation...
Mr. Chaka? I hate to turn you back to the first thing on the thing, Reed's Pond Dam, I know we discussed it with the...
Oh, I was going to get there.
Oh, you are? Okay. I just didn't, you went by, I didn't want you to go by it, because...
I'm sorry, I have a list here that I started.
People here wanted to talk about, we talked about the whole drainage system within the town in the last meeting, and these Rich Murray and his wife are here from Manzella Court.
We can go right to Reed's Pond Dam.
You know something, we should pull a plank on that. I'm already for it, I just don't understand why we haven't done it yet, quite frankly. It's been done over the years without much ado, it's been done by illegally, and there wasn't really much to do.
Well, the boards that were placed here were placed illegally, but at this point, Highway Superintendent Dave Taylor has requested that we allow him the latitude to make the decision for when they will be pulled. I don't doubt that they will be pulled at some point, and/or whether it's DCR or Department of Transportation, but Dave Taylor, to this date, has not indicated, along with John Laughlin, we don't want to do it yet.
Well, I know that the Murrays are here regarding the sewer thing outside their house. They have a French drain that was allowed to be built, this is the couple we talked about on Manzella Court, and the two drains across the street are down where they should be, and a drain in front of his house is overflowing, because there may be something wrong with a crushed pipe under there.
Catch basin?
Sorry. Catch basin, his catch basin, yeah. And, you know, and I went down and saw it a couple of times, and there is definitely a discrepancy in the water level from one side of the street to the other. One of the issues may be that, you know, when they built these things years ago, the pipes that they used to connect them, you know, weren't the best made product in the market, and if there's any crush underneath the street, that could be what's holding up the water flow rather than take his French drain. I know Mr. Taylor was interested in closing that off, and I just want to give them their opportunity to meet with you and/or Dave Taylor to...
They are welcome to meet with me anytime. I did not know that that would be here tonight, or I think with Dave Taylor...
It didn't, and when I saw Rich, you know, when I saw him here, I knew why they were here, so.
Yeah.
Rather than have him sit here all night and blow him off.
I certainly don't want to blow anybody off.
No, so, you know, maybe he can make an appointment, Richie and his wife can make an appointment to just discuss, you know, the French drain that they have and the overall situation down there. I mean, the water level between where the river runs out back and Waymouth Field itself is not a heck of a lot of distance, and I did discuss the drain there that comes across is not, there's no channel there anymore through that marsh, and I think that if that was opened up, that would make a big difference, and the water would drain from that end of the town quite more easily, I guess. But I talked to John Laughlin, who was the sewer superintendent, and it's really their responsibility, the drains out of those streams and rivers are really come under their responsibility, and, you know, I think that we can get them all to work together, and I know they fixed one thing down there for the older woman that was here before, and they cleaned out the stream and rerouted the water and helped her out, so, you know, this is just one more problem that's, I won't say it's annual, because we don't always get the same amount of rain we get every year, but what's there, you know, what the property ought to put in should be theirs unless there's, if it's our reason that there's something going on, then we should fix it. If it's not, and we've got to tell them, say la vie, then, you know, but at least we should look at it as to why the, both sides of the street are different levels and stuff like that. I just know it's an ongoing thing with some of the people, and I get my occasional conversation about it when I'm out and about town, and, you know, basically, we'd like to keep as many people as we can happy. So, if you would, if he can call you up and maybe you can get to him with Dave Taylor, and so that they will have...
Anytime.
Be able to sit down face to face and discuss the whole thing, so that something can be worked out amicably.
And Mr. Ryan, and to the Murrays, just so you know, and even the viewing audience, if you come into Town Hall, typically, my door is open unless I have a scheduled meeting with someone, or if you call and make a, we'll make an appointment. I meet with virtually anybody, anytime. I am not prepared to discuss Manzella.
Oh, no, I just, I have to throw my weight around so the townspeople know I'm effective.
I'm not up to speed on the Manzella Court situation at this point, so we would have to meet with Dave Taylor and certainly John Laughlin and see where we're at and what their recommendations are. But I do have a day off tomorrow, but I'll be here all day Thursday, or just call and we'll schedule an appointment. Town Hall is closed on Fridays for the summer. Thank you for this public service announcement, but I'll, all day Thursday or whenever.
Thank you.
Or send an email, we're not calling back. Thank you.
There you go.
As long as you don't bring Andy Triantefello. Thank you, Mr. Ryan. So ADA, we were doing that. Reed's Pond Dam, I think it's great news that both Senator Keenan and Representative DeCoste are telling you, and I know that we are on them, that DOT has acknowledged that it's theirs. They still haven't said what they're going to do about it, but, you know, we're trying to push the peanut up the hill with our nose at this point and get them. And as I said to the representative from the governor's office, when Representative DeCoste indicated, I said, you can go down and see that that is one unified structure. It's not 14 inches of dam in Rockland, and the rest is the state, and where that may go. It was constructed all at once and all the way under the road when the state did 123. So, we probably granted them an easement to do the dam, doesn't mean that we want the ownership. And as they said, $100,000 is probably not going to resolve it, not something that Rockland wants to take on the burden of, so.
And that's right, now too, in terms of the boards, I mean, there's liability issues there too, in terms of...
There's certainly liabilities, and we had a letter in April that we sent to DCR when they said, hey, go ahead and remove the boards. And I said, if you grant Rockland a waiver of liability, we would consider removing the boards on your behalf. And then, once again, to use one of my favorite sayings, the silence has been deafening. We've heard crickets, there's still no response to that April letter from the Department, from DCR and Dam Safety. So, we'll continue, I think the best avenue was to work with Senator Keenan and Representative DeCoste towards getting that done. Update on ADA, I talked to that farmer's market, reminder, farmer's market is on Town Hall, steps three to seven every Friday. Town Hall schedule, we are closed Fridays. We're moving forward on the streetlights, I am talking to them. There's a huge discrepancy, and Dave Taylor has promised to help work with us on the number of streetlights. National Grid has said that we own around a little over 600 streetlights, and yet, when the company that wants to do our transition over to the LEDs did a count, it came out at over 800. Now, whether or not they're counting streetlights that individuals are paying for, or they're counting other streets, so Dave Taylor's agreed to help us get a more accurate count. Obviously, if we have to replace 800 versus 600, the price goes up a little bit, but I think we can still absorb it. We'll be making improvements, so we'll ask people to bear with us. I know some of the side yards are still a mess, we're waiting for the new fiscal year. We do have some funding, thank you for the Finance Committee, but, and Dave Taylor, they'll begin here, I think sometime around the end of July, starting to make improvements to the two side yards that will certainly help for events here at Town Hall, or even, for example, the Rockland Stroll. We're moving on that. Aggregation is moving forward, just to let the board know. And finally, I think finally, let me go through my notes here. Oh, no, it's not finally. Acknowledging to the public or letting the public know that, once again, the town of Rockland has prevailed in court, the appeals court has made a decision that the summary judgment given to the town in the case with Kevin McGee has been upheld, and also that we have actually had to go in and we have made the attachment of the over $25,000 that the court's determined that he owed us as a result of some of the frivolous actions he's taken against the town. Also, we have a request, two things, I guess, and I'll be done. We have a request from the town clerk, she wants to, we are down to about 223 dogs that aren't licensed, and that's out of the approximately 2,400 dogs that we have in town. If you remember, we used to only have like 200 or 300 dogs that were licensed. The town clerk's office has done an outstanding job, and they've really been trying to contact everybody, but they would like, while the townspeople of Rockland become more aware that we're serious about having all the dogs licensed in town, she has asked, Donna Shorthall has asked the selectman to grant them, to vote to extend the deadline to August 1st for fines of $50 for having an unlicensed dog, and it's a $100 fee if their rabies has expired. She would like to ask the selectman to extend to August 1st to provide the last 223 dogs a short probation. And at that point, they'll be sending out the letters and the fines and working with the dog officer to collect it. So that would require a vote of the board to extend to August 1st the time to license your dog.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor? See any of them vote?
And finally, in another rattle boy, and I continually praise the staff that we have here at Town Hall and the department heads, I think that we're very fortunate across the board. I would like to congratulate our own town accountant, Eric Hart, who has been elected president of the Plymouth, North Rock and Bristol Counties Accountants Association at their elections about two weeks ago. So, hats off to Eric. We know what a great job he does, and certainly, the association must recognize his talents as well. Thank you.
Okay, selectmen's comments. Comments and opinions expressed by the individual members do not necessarily reflect the views of the Board of Selectmen, and are the opinions and comments of only the individual member. With that, Mr. Laughlin.
Thank you, Ed. I just wanted to offer my condolences to Dick Phelps and the rest of his family, with the passing of his wife, Ann. Ann served as town school nurse at the high school for over 20 years, and she's had a profound effect on the community and the students of Rockland, anybody that knew her, really. She was a wonderful woman, and they have visiting hours at the McGoon Biggins on Friday between 5:00 and 8:00 p.m. That's it.
Okay, you all set?
Yep.
Okay. Ms. Hall?
Just to sort of piggyback off the Reed's Pond issue, knowing that the Murrays are here, I want to let you know, as well as people at home, that I've, I met with Dave Taylor and with John Laughlin, and I'm the lead on to the sewer board, so I go to their meetings as well. One of the things I'm looking to do is really take a, I'd like to see the town, is take a long-term fix on some of the streets, the open channel drainage issues that we have in town. Like many other towns, it's not unique to this town by any sense of the imagination, where we're constantly just kind of, I don't know, putting Band-Aids on that type of issue when there's a problem, we go out and react, very reactive. And I'd really like to see the town take a proactive response. So we started with a list of all the areas where we have open channel drainage, and I've been in touch with environmental partners and their stormwater professional to get an idea of the scope of work and the costs associated with developing an operation and maintenance plan for those particular issues, and how often they need to be done, which areas need to be prioritized more than others, because some are much more critical to our drainage than others. So we want to make sure that we're putting our money in the right place. So I'm hoping that that scope will come in, and that at some point, that we'll be able to take a long-term look at planning for being more proactive on those types of issues. So, wasn't planning on talking about that, but it seemed right. The other thing I wanted to mention is, I was able to go to the library meeting last month, there is for any parents out there, they have a lot of programs for the kids this summer called Build a Better World, a lot of summer reading programs, also activities going on for the kids. The other thing I found out, which, well, I was there, although not a library program, is that Rockland Trust right now will pay your kid $2.50 a book that they read in the summer. Bribes always work for my kids, so maybe they'll work for your kids too for summer readings, so they need to read a minimum of four, maximum of 10, open a savings account, and your kid will get 25 bucks. So it's a nice little prop for the kids for doing their summer reading. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. No bribes, want to keep the board clean.
I just wanted to say to Dick Phelps and his family, it's a sad day, great persons, great people, longtime Rockland people. Life always goes on, but it's, you know, one of life's cruel tricks that one of us has to go before the other. And I feel bad for the whole family, because she was a valiant woman. So, she'll rest easy, Dick, with your, the love from your family. The rodeo, is there a truck rodeo coming? The rodeo, is there a truck rodeo coming up over the base or someone said that? But I want to really just talk about two of Rockland's finest public servants, Wayne Delprette from the fire department and Rick Summers from the police department have, are retired, and they had a couple of parties for them, and I happen to be at the fire department one, and I'm going to Rick Summers, who, again, has done a great job with the Rockland Police Department and has always been the court officer down in Hingham Court for some years now, and, and have had the opportunity to deal with both of these guys on a professional and or private friendly nature, and they're two top people in the town of Rockland, and they should walk, hold their heads up proud and high, and everybody in the town of Rockland should say, "Thank you for the service that you gave us," to those guys. And regarding the airbase issue and the cars, you know, it's always been a little bit of struggle where people are, where the three towns are sort of butting heads, I guess, to get an equal share over there, and, and like all mother ducks, everybody wants to protect their own as best they can without seeming to hurt the other guy, but we'll work it out, and the mayor is not really totally unresponsible, and, and the town of Weymouth or the city that's called the town of Weymouth. But our people, Tom, I want to say thank you to Tom Henderson and Kelly O'Brien for the diligence that they are there for us and making sure that we don't take it on the chin anywhere. So a shout out to them guys and a shout out to the board and Ed for all the stuff that he's been doing for us. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Mr. Mullen?
Yes, first of all, I'm echoing the sentiments of our entire board, all to Mr. Phelps and to the Phelps family and friends, and, and was just a gem. And, you know, I knew her up until I graduated high school in 2003 as the head nurse at the high school. She retired from the schools the same year, and, but anyone who knew Mrs. Phelps knew that her love and commitment to Rockland didn't end when she retired. She was involved in so many things, the education foundation, the, the fundraiser during the holidays, the holiday magic for our less fortunate, our kids throughout the town, and she just, I mean, you think of the type of people that really make Rockland special, and, like, it was Ann and the entire Phelps family. So I extend my thoughts to them as well. Just one quick update, the Reimagine Rockland group, just an update for, to the board and everyone at home, is, is moving forward. It's exciting. It's, are trying to wrap our arms around a, you know, like a really, a big plan and to try to keep everything focused into very manageable parts. If you remember, I think the end of May, the town, the town received a grant to look at different types of marketing and downtown prioritization projects, like uptown, and, we're moving forward on that. At some point, I think, we'll probably be back before the board in the, not too distant future with a presentation on, like, our plan forward, but also to try to formalize some type of group or, or committee. A lot of our work today has a kind of an ad hoc, and which kind of makes it challenging because if we're meeting to meeting, we have different folks coming and going, so I'm more on that. And then, the last thing, over the past, a few months, actually, since I've been elected, but especially since I went, kind of on the tirade at the end of last meeting, I've been thinking a lot, on the town meetings, but really more generally now, how we are getting information off the folks out of town. As we all have mentioned repeatedly, there are a lot of good things happening throughout the town, and I think one of the things I've learned as a member of the board is that unless you tune in every other Tuesday night, which I don't have any idea who does, but I really don't have any idea, really, what's happened. And even if you tune into our meetings, you will probably left, like, even more confused than if you, if you didn't tune in at all. So one of the things I've been, kind of thinking, and this is just all kind of my, my thoughts, wondering if we might be able to add this on an agenda either in the summer or the fall, is really to develop a, a communication plan, if you will. So we might be able to improve that, to share with the residents, a different things to better inform ourselves, first of all, to be able to help residents. But just as an example, I've been going through my, in my day job, one of the things I've noticed with a lot of the towns and the communities that I've worked with is, you know, like, every month, I don't have a different, the department heads will come to their meetings and present on a different types of trends or updates in terms of, oh, there might be like a fire chief presenting once a month on a different, a types of trends in terms of accidents and locations of accidents, or a trends in the substance abuse issue challenges, or even one of the things we probably also in the past few days, there was a question that came up on Facebook, and, like, I really don't want to admit that I read the Facebook, because it was fine, but, I mean, we are there as a new sober home in town, and, and I completely support sober homes, and in terms of zoning issues, there, there's very limited things in terms of the Dover amendment that we can do anyways, but just, for example, the fact that maybe a town will, once a month, help come up, a building inspector, like, can just report on the types of permits that are being called and different types of projects. Obviously, we're not interfering in any type of deciding the zoning or confidentiality thing that might be happening, but just, you know, really, we are informed and, most importantly, so the residents are informed. So then, hopefully, when we come to a special town meeting, or when we come to regular town meetings, when we present the things and the, you know, or whatever we do, that will hopefully be positive for the town, we have a community that's, that's more informed and engaged and involved. One of the things we, I talked about repeatedly, is the need for, you know, our new Rockland to be involved in, and hopefully this might help that also. So I've gone on long enough, but maybe over the summer, we can look at ways, maybe perhaps we might be able to do that to, again, to better inform us and to better inform the town as to what's happening in your community as well, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Maybe, Dave, could, we could request some Nielsen ratings, and we could determine what the viewership is. We could, we could start there. The second thing, communication is, is one of those things. I mean, a lot of people use social media. I personally am old school. I mean, I still have AOL, so when I tell people that, they look at me kind of funny, but it works for me. Unfortunately, what happens is a lot of people don't get involved or pay attention to things, Mike, until it directly affects them. And that can be a pro and a con. I mean, you take a look at the audience that's here tonight, I mean, we have a reporter, we have our state rep, we have a couple citizens and a couple other citizens who are committee members, and of course, we have Andy, who's, you know, in three minutes, we're going to boot him out, but. At any rate, what you have is you have people who come and people who go, and we really don't know what the problems are until something affects them, whether that was the VW thing, whether that was the 40B on End of Union Street, whether it was the Reed's Pond thing. A lot of people don't know where to turn. Town Hall is very open, and if we can't find the information, we try to find the information for people. But a lot of times, it's new to us, too, some of these issues are, and we'll say things that we have to justify and kind of chart our way through. And sometimes it's from previous boards, you know, what they had ruled way back when, and we got to fix them, but social media does play a big part of getting the word out, whether that's for school, for sports, and things like that. We do have the new Town Hall sign-out front. We can utilize more for some of that. And again, we've done anything on WRPS. We've announced things, the radio, we seem to get more coverage, we seem to get more positive press in the newspaper, but again, I don't know if it's something we, where you have to dedicate somebody for social media or something.
One of the issues, excuse me, one of the issues that I find in the social media is you, the know people jump right on anything you say. If you say, "We're going to put a green line down the street," they're going to say, "No, it has to be white. We're not going to, we don't want a green line." And the green line doesn't even affect them. They don't live near it, they don't, aren't involved in it, it doesn't really bother them, but they're up there saying, "We can't do this, we can't do that." We're conspirators, I understand, on social media these days, that, you know, one of the former people that used to sit up here says that this is the place to go to find conspiracies. Well, I'd like to know where the hell they are because I'm not getting a dime out of it, you know? And if there is any money to be had, I'd like to find out where it is. Excuse me, I didn't mean this, but it just, it annoys me, it annoys me when people can sit on the other side of that computer and they can say the most disparaging things about anybody they want, and they think, you know, "Stand up in front, come right up here, sit right in the front row, we're glad to have you. Sit right up and tell us how bad you are. You're already in the front row."
I prefer that we're not conspirators, we're, but rather, we're strategic planners.
There you go.
I think we're doing a lot of good things here, and we try and get the word out. We do, and I work with Marcy on press releases going forward, you know, we even try and stack them up and work with the reporters so that sometimes you can over and undate people if they're not going to, you can't make them pay attention, short of knocking on the door, but we're on the radio, we're on the news items, we're posting it on our website, but we try to kind of roll one out a week.
And it's not even like press releases or social media like I'm thinking right now, it's just not even here, you know, so having, I mean, like, honestly, it would have been helpful, you know, to hear about like a sober home or like other issues, and I think, just I think the challenge, I want to, I want to completely, because this, the challenge is not only affecting our town, but, and I think every town is or communities kind of grapple with this right now, but social media, the way people are getting the information now, you know, in this whole government 2.0 is, is a whole nother realm. It's more than press releases, it's, it's a whole new customer service realm, and I think going forward, and I'm not even, and I've, and I've pontificated even about social media before, and I'm not even saying that's the answer right now, but I'm just, I'm saying maybe at this point, we, our entrance to some type of long-term plan, a strategic plan, if you will, about how we move forward. I mean, there are some communities out there that actually have a PIA fund, you know, to handle this, and I'm not even saying that, but just, you know, to, but at the very least, I guess, or maybe if there's a way to have, you know, department heads out there to share a trend with us and the people at home, so when, oh, so when there's a question about an accident at an intersection, for example, I know the intersection at Liberty and East Water, for example, is always on people's radar, it's a major issue. I, I take my life in, in my hands every day through that intersection, but maybe even if we had, you know, the highway superintendent, once a month, or once every other month, I'm not trying to make this, I'll be late by the point, but just, I give folks enough that adds into the process, so when we get questions about like a stop sign or like either that intersection or another one, and people know the process, so we're not always trying to, oh, respond and play catch-up and to just react to things, and, and as I mentioned, like, it's part of a longer conversation and, of the plan, and, and I'm not pointing fingers or complaining or anything, I'm just, you know, like, we're in 2017, and I think we just need to plan, oh, you know, I'll, I'll plan the communication aspects as much as we're planning the downtown aspects and everything else, the sewer and water infrastructure aspects, I mean, they're all so interrelated now, and I just.
Well, I think, I think the points are, it's nice to be proactive, but unfortunately, sometimes with circumstances, we are nothing but reactive because whether it's the resources financially that we need to do something, or just by the mere fact that something happens and it's either accidental or there's an incident and we don't know, and then we have, all we can do is react and respond. We've been fortunate the last few years that we've been able to prop Rockland up with a lot of good people as far as supporting Rockland, and we've been able to show that the department heads can work all together, and that's why we're in good shape. And yeah, then we need to start the next step set. In order to continue that, we need to find out what the other issues are. When you talk about East Water and Liberty Street, that's a, that's a bad intersection. Everybody in town knows that. Everybody knows if you're coming from Millbrook and Sanchez Crossing and up from Spring Street and Beach Hill, that it's tough to get out onto Market Street from Spring Street. That's something that needs to be addressed. We can all agree on certain things, but we also have to look at, we have to start to prioritize things and take a look at things, and this is part of when we talked about a state of Rockland, where we are, where we're going, and that's a big factor that we need to do. I mean, there's a lot, we, when I first got on the board, Mike, we talked, one of my things was streetlights. It's finally coming into existence eight years later, and I, I don't want to wait eight years for saying we need to communicate better with the, the general public. I think we can improve with communicating, not only with the general public, but one another. But what happens is, a lot of times, you have open meeting law, you have all these other things, and it's difficult to share things, and sometimes people share them on social media before they're even factual, and it makes it that much harder for us to do our jobs.
And I'm not arguing any of that, I'm just saying.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying you are. And, and to your point, I think we do need to go through and communicate a little bit better, and we've tried. I mean, I think we have a good rapport with the school department, we have a good, good rapport with the police and fire department, highway department, all of that, and we've all shown that we can work together. In the past, we've had department heads in to give us updates of where they were going, what they were planning, and how they were doing, so we could kind of give a little peek ahead. And that's kind of taking a backseat back because there were other projects that come up, and we just didn't have the time in the meeting to do it. And I'm not saying it's a, it's a bad thing to do, to come up with that, but maybe, maybe there's got to be a way that, you know, we can have an update or a simple, a simple, or something, something that can be sent out.
Like a month, a month, yeah, and I'm not saying I have all the answers right now, but I mean, like, other communities, again, oh, they have like a monthly update, oh, like, all these department heads write, oh, you know, write the project initiatives they're working on, and then they submit it either to other boards, to City Council, or to the residents.
Well, we're also very fortunate because we have department head meetings every, every weekend, and with those department head meetings, we can, a lot of those things, and that's how one department knows when another department's doing, so they can actually work together to resolve a problem before it becomes a major problem for the residents.
Do have continual updates to the community, and it's done right here. We've talked about roads and this and that, and you want to talk about that one intersection, and yeah, that's part of the complete streets thing that we're going forward. You're not going to be able to cram all that meeting into this, nor are you going to be able to get all those department heads here because you have one question, and hear from them all, and get out of here before 3:00 in the morning.
And I'm not, I'm not saying every meeting, I'm not saying every month, just sometimes.
So it can't be this specific, but we have multiple department heads. Additionally, the government here, the way the charter is, is many of those department heads do not report to me or you, they're not responsible. We can ask them, and they're kind enough to come to the department head at every meeting, but you couldn't possibly demand of them at this point in time that they even do a month of report to the board. And I'm not saying that they wouldn't, but they have boards they already report to, whether it's a library trustees, whether it's a sewer, whether it's water, whether it's whatever, and, and you will find on occasion that they'll even say, "That's not your job." That's a board of health will say, "That's not your job," or, and I'm not speaking specifically of them, so there is a disconnect here, and we're lucky, Mike. I call this job, and I love my job, but I, I constantly reference it as hurting cats because you don't have the authority, so you can try and kind of work with them. But we are the newsletter, and if people want to be involved, now, that's not going to prevent some unknowing fool from posting something on the internet that has no basis in reality, and we can't respond momentarily to put out every one of those matches that someone lights out there, but the general public that's watching, and I think it's indicative of this board. But the general public that's watching, and I think it's indicative of this board, the people that get elected to this board, and the people that are involved in the town, there are people involved, and whether it's a church, or whether it's at the Lions Club, or the Kiwanis Club, or the school committee meetings, or all these meetings, I think there's a lot of support for where the community has moved. We can't get to every fool with an opinion. I wish we could.
And this isn't about the fools at all, this is about good work from people. And all I'm saying is, I think, and I've heard a lot of people throughout the community, I'll give feedback to, first of all, like I know the fact that we have a charter and we have separate elected people and everything else. And I think, like that's why tonight, I just came here to throw up the idea, because I know there's things we would work through and work around, and the politics and the personalities and everything else, that's local government, and I understand that. But like at the same point, if we, I think, if we as a Board of Selection, as the executive branch of the town, continue moving forward just in a way that we hope people will tune in every other Tuesday night, we hope people will pay attention to the press releases. And I think we're missing out on a lot in terms of engaging, number one, informing our residents, number two, engaging our residents. And if you look around Whitman, for example, that's what I'm talking about, Kings, that's what I'm talking about. And I'm not saying those communities have all the answers, I just think, going forward, I don't have all the answers on this, but I just, I think communication in this whole new paradigm of a municipal government board we operate in now, just requires us to look at it, and that's all really interesting.
I want to just echo my support for Mr. Mullen's position. I agree, I think we can do better with communication, and I think we can do it incrementally. I know in Quincy, we started with something called CityLink, it was a direct email for people who signed up via the website, it was for, mostly for emergency updates, roof closures, things like that, remember the parade, whatever it is, but it was at least another means to communicate with residents who can't tune in or don't have cable, like me, and who can get, you know, things through email, and who do monitor email on their phone regularly. And I think it's something that can be done incrementally, and I don't think it's a lot of heavy lifting. And to your point, Alan, although you're herding cats, it's in these department heads' interest to get the information on what their departments are doing out to the public so that when they need to go to town meeting for an appropriation or something, that the town knows what's happening with the money, knows that they've been responsible for the money, and knows that they've planned for whatever they're asking for. So it's always in that department head's interest, too, to get the information out on what they're doing in case they need additional appropriations in the future, so that people know where their money's going.
Well, one of the things that we could do as a board in regards to that is, we're all assigned to be, you know, you've got water department, you've got this department...
The liaisons.
The liaison, so you go there and you say to the head of the water department, say, you know, "What's going on, what are you guys up to, is there any issues that, you know, you're working on now, and not that you're going to, you know, be on one side or the other, but you can help them." And then, and then we know what's going on, we come back here and we say, we'll make a little spot here for anybody who wants to talk about their department, can talk to Alan or the chairman and get on the agenda. So today, we're going to talk about the water department, you can talk about the water department, whoever's that liaison, and say, "Look, this is what the water department's doing, this is what, I talked to the superintendent, this is what their plans are, this is what their restrictions are, is there issues with the Murray's, is there issues down here, and what are we doing to fix them?" And that way, again, again, you know, we take the responsibility ourselves for getting it out there. I mean, I speak to a lot of people during the day because, you know, I talk a lot. Right, Richie, you know, right? We have hold court down for breakfast in the morning, and I hear a lot of, you know, the disgruntled little things that, you know, people just have in their craw that they want to fix. So here we are, we get the, we get the ability to do it, and we're on TV, and, you know, heaven knows that meetings are short enough. Right, Alan?
I can't say how many people actually utilize some of the services we already have on the town website.
Right.
But there is a program where you can sign up, Deidre, and you can get notifications of emergencies and things like that on the website. There's also a notification where if you are, you want to tune into a specific issue or a specific board, they'll send you an email when that board's meeting, so you don't miss it. You can simply go back on, pull up what the agenda might be, so if it's something of interest, you can actually attend, or at least you're aware that there's going to be a meeting. So we do have those provisions. Our website has gotten much better in the last three, four years, okay? We have a lot of forms online now that you can do, with town hall being open on the Tuesday nights, that allows a lot of the residents to come in, and they can actually participate, not only with us here at the board, but they get the opportunity to go through and see some of these people that they need to see in town hall. By changing the hours of the dump in Rockland, that's allowed people so they can go there on a Sunday now. I mean, I got my mailer today where you have the new schedule for the recycling, I'm sure everyone else in town did too, put it on your board, put it somewhere so you don't lose it. And if you go on the website, there are updates on the website. For example, there was an update on the website when I looked earlier today, that they're doing some work on X Street, and that your trash may be delayed because of the construction. If it is, please call the Board of Health. So we are trying to get some of the word out. Social media unfortunately has taken over a lot of, a lot of different aspects, and I understand, believe me, I understand the younger generation uses it a lot more than some of the older generation, although sometimes, you know, my own opinion, I think sometimes too much information is just plain too much information because then people can't decide what to do. We have a lot of good people in town volunteering at times, such as us on the board and other board members, other people who are in committees. And you're going to get the few that don't know what's going on, or the few who don't ask, or the few who are once in a position of no, who just put a comment out there and people run with it. And unfortunately, it's tough to put those wildfires out, and it's tough sometimes with anonymous. I mean, so all we can do is do the best we can as a board to make sure that we address citizens' concerns. We're trying to be good stewards for the town, to make sure that we look at all programs. We're working with our representatives on the state and state level, as well as on the federal level when need be. So we're doing all we can to try to make sure that Rockland progresses forward. As far as communicating more, yeah, we need to probably work on something, something that will be beneficial maybe to the younger generation, to start getting them involved. I don't have all the answers either, but it's something we can certainly look at. But I would like, you know, we can talk about this in the future, but I would like to thank, you know, the state for not cutting out our local aid, because that's a lifeline for us, we really need that. I mean, Rockland was in a great position this year at town meeting, but that was an anomaly. And by having the state aid, I mean, that allows us to hold the line and still continue to provide the services. And, you know, before I close the meeting now, I would like to personally express my condolences to Dick Phelps and his family, and on behalf of, you know, us at town hall, I'm sure everyone feels the same way. So that's all I have for tonight, and we can certainly look at addressing this in the future, Mike.
Those two, you're in?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We have aye, aye, aye. Thank you. Thank you all for attending, and thank you, Dave.
If you've got questions, come ask us.